Hello, everyone. I haven't done an opinion piece for quite some time. But this time, I'm going to talk about the issues that were presented to us on May 10, the Board of Supervisors meeting. And I just want to touch on a few things, so hopefully this opinion piece will be brief. Couple of things happened. And, for example, I think one of the things that was most outstanding to me is the aged report Outstanding Receivables from the sewer plant. Now, it was a shock last year to find out that we had collectibles that were well over 90 days, some of them several years, that added up to $1.7 million. And they present this report in this meeting, you'll see it if you watch the video after this opinion piece. And it shows $1.7 million in September, and at the end of April 30, 2021, there's still $1.6 million outstanding. So they collected $100,000, you know, in that time period. But our finance director claims that she collected all of the $1.7 million, because that's what they moved in from the reserve fund into the general fund. And she claims that none of that money was from the proceeds of the sale of a sewer plant, but from these receivables. So she contradicts herself in this meeting, talking about this. But what's more disturbing to me, it's very disturbing, is that when you look at this worksheet she provides, it doesn't make any sense. None of the supervisors caught it. And they're supposed to be looking at this data, understanding it. Supervisor Staub, who's pretty much taken on the role of the financial guru there, didn't have a word to say about it. Felt it was a good report. No one noticed that the dollars of $67,000 or such that she claimed they collected from December 11 to April 30, 2021, was short by about $26,000. If you go below that line, and you look at what, they have this little box that says what they collected, and you add up January, February, March, and April for 2021, it's like $94,000 that they collected. So you would expect the receivables, accounts receivable, to decrease by at least that much, yet they're short. So that tells us that the whole report doesn't make any sense. And then usually, you'll run a report for the end of the month to get the balance. But you can see, like, she has September 23, you know, not quite the end of the month, but close to it. Then she has December 10 as another report, and then finally, April 30. So I think they're managing the numbers, trying to send some sort of message, but it was garbled in translation. And again, our supervisors, who should be scrutinizing these reports, and our township manager, who should verify that all this information makes sense and it's accurate, they failed their job. And when they fail their job, they fail us. Now, I have a more detailed video that you can watch. It's called "The $1.7 Million Reserve Transfer Lie" for 4/26/21. It's 12 minutes long. You can find it at my website, exeterunited.com. It's also posted on my YouTube channel. It's also posted on the Facebook page for exeterunited.com, and also on Twitter. So I encourage you to watch it, because I break it down in great detail, explain it in very simple terms, so that we can all understand it, and we can see, again, what they're doing to our community. And this all falls in line with, you know, the audit scam that I have a video on, that's 25 minutes, you can watch that. That's not over yet. I'll be talking to the authorities about what they're trying to pull off with the audit scam. The interviews recently, that they really screwed up. I mean, one of the supervisors never saw my presentation. And then the other gentleman, Todd Arnold, the chairman, temporary chairman for the vacancy board, he lost connection, and he missed, we don't know how much of Tom Arnold's presentation that he missed. So it was just unfair to all the participants, but this is the way they operate. And we also have to remember the published balance sheet in the Redding Eagle that didn't balance. So all these things, and like, the 2020 budget where Jennifer Savage insisted we have a $3.8 million budget surplus, but that didn't materialize. Even with COVID-19, we should have had something still available over the budgeted revenue. Nothing happened. And when we do, they spend it all. So enough on the aging report. Look into it, I think you'll find it absolutely fascinating. And then, in this meeting, they talk about opening up the park pavilions. So they're going to rent out the park pavilions, which is great. I mean, I'm hoping they'll rent, you know, open up all the parks for full activities. I mean, the governor's opening up everything. But then that leads us right into their discussion on open meetings, in-person open meetings, okay? So I think if you listen to their discussion, you can only come to one conclusion, and that is, they're going to do everything they can to continue the meetings as they do them over the internet, through Zoom, and they're not going to allow us to participate in these meetings yet. And it's very disappointing, but it's not surprising. I mean, it's a cowardly approach. They're very reclusive. And in the past, when COVID first started, if you remember, they said they're going to follow all the guidelines per the governor. He tells us what to do, we're going to do it. The governor is opening up everything. Many other municipalities are having their township meetings attended by their residents, but not us. Not us. So you'll hear our manager come up with all kinds of reasons why we shouldn't have open meetings. And David Spees supports it. Now, Staub and Kircher speak up and say, "Well, we should do it. We need a space." And this is the other thing. They've had over a year to determine what space they want to use, whether it's at the Redding Country Club, where amusingly, our township manager, Jeff Bartlett, says, "Well, that will interfere with the activities in that building." Well, there are no activities. And if so, the meetings are only twice a month, for now an hour or more. So we could use that building, or we could use the Dunn Center, or we could insist with the library that they provide us with that room for our meetings twice a month. I mean, we dump a lot of money in the library, they should be able to accommodate us. But the point is, they haven't worked on a location in the past year. And then the other thing they need to do is work on the public address system, the audio, so that everyone can hear them speaking clearly. And that's not been addressed. So they've just been dragging their feet. Simply put, they're busy golfing. That's what they're doing. So, and we have a manager that doesn't know how to manage. I mean, he overstated his qualifications, and anyone that pays attention to what he's doing can clearly see that. So don't expect any open meetings, unless, of course, as I make a comment at the end of this meeting on May 10, where I indicate how they are reactive instead of proactive. So maybe because I've criticized the fact that they won't open up the meetings, and there's really no excuse, perhaps they'll react to that, and we'll find out that the meetings will be open very shortly. But it depends on how cowardly and reclusive they want to continue being, and shutting the public out, as they do. You'll see that there's very, very little public comment anymore at these meetings. And they've been able to squash that as well. So tune up to the future and see what happens. And I want to talk about, you know, the golf report. Now, I found errors in the Accounts Receivable Aging Report that I think are devastating. And a $1.7 million outstanding accounts receivable, how did it ever get that bad? In the 2019 audit report, it's not even mentioned. And then our Jeff, our Jerry Galef scrutinized the golf report and found several errors. And of course, Mr. Spees tried to dismiss that, but there's no dismissing this information. He says, "Oh, well, it's just for, you know, analysis." Well, you know, if you're going to use analysis, and you want to make good calls, good judgment calls, make the right decisions, you need accurate data. But not Mr. Spees, you know? Let's remember, he's just a chemist. And he'll put together all these different chemicals until something works. But in this case, the golf report is just a nothing burger. The revenue information is not correct, the cost on per unit of what they do is not correct. Because I can tell you, in my experience as a cost accounting manager, one of the things that I've done is that you need to identify the cost drivers to be able to accurately evaluate the cost for that activity. And they don't do that. And Mr. Spees has claimed that this is the industry standard. Gee, I hope he's wrong. Or maybe that's the reason why all these golf courses are hurting right now. So the golf report is just a game they play, because several months or a year ago, I made the statement that the golf course does not make money. It never makes money. It's still not making money. So they came up with the golf report to show that it is making money. And it's all false. Mr. Staub is the leader in this. He presents it to the public as if, what, they made $100,000 last year? No way. Not possible. We even have a report on our Exeter Township website, it's called the Pell Report, where many years ago, they did an evaluation of the golf course, and they said it will never make, it will be lucky to break even most years. And if it does make money, only maybe $20,000. Well, they weren't considering the depreciation now, that they figured out all the equipment that goes with the golf course, and also the interest that we pay on the portion of the bonds that would be allocated to the golf course. And in addition to that, since the food and beverage and the banquet halls are not open, the golf course has to carry the burden of all the expenses. So there's no way the Redding Country Club property makes a profit. And anyone that believes what these supervisors, especially Mr. Staub, is telling you, you know, you're being fooled. It's as simple as that. So also want to talk about, once again, the common courtesy that should be given to those people that take the time to make a public comment. You will see in this video where the chairman of the board, Greg Gaultier, who's the incumbent Democrat running for office again, he just ignores all the comments. I think I made, I took the time to prepare my comment, I made sure it was in three minutes or less, and as soon as I completed this, moved on. No one was willing to address some of the issues that I brought up. And they're valid issues. And then later on, at the public comment on non-agenda items, there was a lady who commented on the poor performance of Mascaro taking over the recycling business. And if you go to Nextdoor, there's a whole string of comments telling us about how poorly Mascaro is doing with the recycling. So they're not proactive, they're reactive. So after they get, and I know they follow all this stuff on social media, they're monitoring Nextdoor all the time, and Facebook. They may deny it, but they should have known about this problem, and they should have addressed it even before this meeting took place. And that's why my last comment of the meeting, at the end of their meeting almost, is about being proactive or reactive. And they're definitely only reactive. Because if they were proactive, that would require taking time out for golfing. And we can't have that, can we? So that's pretty much the end of what I have to say about this meeting, and I think it's a lot to think about. The meeting lasted just a little bit over 55 minutes, compared to other meetings that are an hour and a half to two hours. That's because we now have a chairman of the board who is a school administrator. And he doesn't think that we need to have discussions. He barrels through everything. Do I have a motion? I'll second it. All in favor? 5-0. It's always 5-0. Very few dissensions, and if there is a dissension, it's usually Michelle Kircher, who doesn't agree with that, and she's the only one that considers and thinks about those issues. So watch what they do. Don't believe everything they tell us. Use your own intelligence to decipher what they're really doing. And at the election on May 18, please write me in as the Republican candidate, so that I could go into the general election in November and challenge Greg Gaultier. He is running a write-in campaign for the Republican side. He wants to completely eliminate me, so that he is the only one on the ballot in November. Don't let him do this. Do not let him take choice away from our community. Please write me in, and I would appreciate the opportunity to represent you and make some significant changes here. I'm a leader, I've got a plan. I'm going to communicate with the community, just like I'm doing right now with my opinion pieces for the last two years. Please, I'm asking you to write me in, so I can challenge Greg Gaultier, the Democrat. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope you enjoyed my opinion piece on this meeting.
Hey, good to go.
Okay, I would like to call to order the May 10, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, roll call. Mr. Pyho?
Here.
Mr. Spees?
Here.
Ms. Kircher?
Yeah.
Mr. Staub?
Here.
And I am here. Before we go to public comments, I just want to take a moment to welcome Jack Pyho, our newest supervisor. He was successfully appointed last week, and we just want to welcome him to the team and look forward to working with you, Jack.
Thank you.
Next, public comments.
There was one submitted for the agenda, and it was submitted by David Hughes.
This is David Hughes, living on 47th Street in Exeter Township. I have for the agenda item regarding the accounts receivable aging. At the last meeting, Jen Savage said that the transfer of $1.7 million would be from the reserve, but they are not sewer proceeds. It is from the collection of these accounts receivable. But clearly, we started with around $1.7 million to begin with, and according to your worksheet, April 30, there's still $16 million outstanding. So you have not collected anywhere close to the $1.7 million that you need to transfer to the general fund. And at the current rate, it will be several years to collect these funds. In fact, according to the audited financial statements from 2019, on page 43 of that statement, notes indicate that the township transferred in 2019, $3,911,752 from the sewer fund to the general fund. Obviously, you're subsidizing our budget, the general fund, with these sewer fund proceeds, because we have unbalanced budgets, we have excessive spending, and we have no cost controls. I believe that somehow you're telling us that it's the receivables that are funding this? There's no way. You haven't collected enough of them yet. So why are you misleading the public on this issue? I'd certainly like to hear from our finance director, but mostly from the Board of Supervisors, who are looking at these numbers and can see for themselves that they do not make sense. So be straight up with the public, tell us what is going on, and why you would make a comment that is misleading. Thank you.
Okay, on to announcements, Memorial Day Parade. Who has the information on that?
I can provide that.
Okay.
Just wanted to announce that the American Legion Post 934 will be hosting their annual Memorial Day Parade this year. It will be on Monday, May 31, starting at 9:00 a.m. It starts at Exeter High School and ends at Forest Hill Memorial Cemetery. They expect it to end around 11:30. It does say masks are required to be worn, but they're very excited, because of course it didn't happen last year because of COVID, but with precautions being taken this year, the parade will happen. The township will be participating in it. Clarence will be bringing his famous barrel train, so we're excited about that. Should be a good time.
Well, thank you. On to regular approvals. We are going to skip the vacancy board minutes, because we will need to convene the vacancy board, because that should be the group to approve those minutes. So on to the April 26, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes, the April 26, 2021 meeting.
Okay, Ms. Kircher, any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0 vote. Next, we have disbursements, May 10, 2021. I saw an email with some questions today. Jen, do you want to go over those?
Absolutely. There was a question on the shredded bill for $2,480.78. This was for an onsite bulk shredding of police records that occurred a couple weeks ago. I know we had discussed a few meetings ago, the authorization of this. Part of it, I believe, was due to shredding some very old documents as they worked through some, their accreditation. We also had a question about a Great Valley Consultants invoice. It was for $8,531.72, just miscellaneous building and code enforcement. This is just our standard monthly invoice that we pay. Great Valley does our code enforcement and inspections for permits, so that is just the standard invoice for them to inspect properties. There was also an invoice to revise for $4,200, I believe, which is the maintenance, annual maintenance invoice for our website, for our external website. I think those were all of the questions.
Okay, are there any other questions for Jen? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the disbursements?
I move that we approve the disbursements for May 10, 2021, as submitted.
Okay, I'll second that. Any comments?
Sorry, Greg, I was on mute.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0 vote. On to the monthly golf report. The report is available for review on the township website. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just one, there was a resident that reached out to us, that there was a discrepancy with one date. It was the 20th, that was the number. There was 12 players that were counted twice. That was, Derek was working to have that corrected and resent, but thank you for Mr. Galef, who had noticed that and sent it out to us.
And I think, yeah, and let me comment further on that. I had chatted with Derek today, this afternoon as well, and maybe Jen can clarify this also or confirm this, but my understanding is that the first two pages of the golf report are extractions of actual data, the real numbers, and I don't say real numbers, but the actual numbers, they're in the treasures report as well. The third and fourth pages are extra, I'd call qualitative data, you know, that are generated through Excel spreadsheets, just to give us an idea of what's going on, year to year, month to month, and everything else. So the error that occurred, I think, was one of these formulas, the numbers didn't add up to 100%. It's an Excel thing, where it was calculated on percentages, and then the blocks were done like that, it comes out to whatever, 100, 102%. But the question would be that, hey, the first two pages are the actual numbers, invoices, receivables, everything else. And my understanding then is that Derek takes a few of those numbers, like greens fees, number of rounds, and he does some calculations that were requested of him a couple years ago, and that spreadsheet, you know, has had a couple errors in it, but it's qualitative data. For a sense of the business, that's not the final numbers.
Now, thanks for sharing that. Any other?
I confirm everything you said there. I mean, some of what we're publishing are actually Derek's kind of like internal working papers, I'm going to say, where he tracks, you know, number of rounds, and the weather, and those sorts of things, to be able to look back and look at history on. So they were never intended to be publicized. We've just kind of switched them into a public record.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, next, to the monthly Right to Know report. Any comments or questions with regards to that? This report's available on the township website as well.
I would just make a comment that excellent control of the expenses, you look at, you know, the total expenses to address these, and that all of the response time, that all of the ones that are listed there were done in less than five days. So I think excellent work by the team.
Agreed.
I have a question. How many did you not, that right to knows came in that weren't, has not gotten a response? You know, just like, something was wrong with it, or? You have on here everything that was approved, that was done in the right to knows, but what about the people who send in right to knows, and they aren't giving, given an answer for whatever reason you have? Is there a record of how many of those there are?
Well, you do, everyone does get a response back. Typically, if they're asking a question that can be asked, there are times when people will send a right to know request in, and it's not really a right to know, they're asking a question, it's not for a document or something. So there are times where that may occur, but if somebody sends in a right to know request, we either give them the documentation that they request, or there's a denial. Basically, the response then is that we don't have the documents that you're asking for. And they're not really broken down differently on here. It may take, you know, one day, it may take four days to try and research the information they're looking for, but if the township does not have that document, the response that gets sent back to them is that we do not have that document, that document doesn't exist, and it's up to the- And it's up to the, the person who did the request, if they want to appeal that decision to the Office of Open Records. If they feel that what we, the information we gave them is incorrect, they can appeal it to, to that office in Harrisburg.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, so those are included on, on the report, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, next we'll move on to an update on the outstanding sewer accounts receivable balance. Jen, is that you?
Sure is. Laurie, can I ask you to pull it up on your screen? Sorry, I should have asked that earlier. So I'm just going to provide an update. We've been doing this approximately quarterly on our efforts for the, collecting the sewer accounts receivable that is out there after the sale of the wastewater plant. So we started out, when I started doing these updates, with a little over a million seven in principal and penalty. We are now down to a little over a million six in principal and penalty. As you'll note, the principal will continue to decrease because we are not, you know, producing any more bills. However, as people don't pay their bills, the penalty will continue to increase because we do assess penalties every quarter to unpaid bills. And then, oh, there it is. Thank you, Laurie. So between September and December, we reduced the AR by about $43,000. Between December and April, we've reduced it about another $68,000. So making some progress, nothing earth shattering at the moment. I am pleased, though, with the number of delinquent accounts that we have reduced. So we started out with about 741 accounts, we're now down to 537. So that's a positive that I like to focus on. We had a lot of bills, people didn't pay maybe their last, last bill or their last two bills. I think there may have been a little bit of confusion with the sale of the plant of, do I need to pay this bill? Does this bill get, you know, wrapped into my new PA American bill? So through some letters and collection efforts, we've notified people that that bill was due to the township. So we've received a lot of those final payments that are much smaller balances. My staff has been working very hard to try and establish payment arrangements with folks. So we have 19 payment arrangements scheduled so far where people are making monthly payments to reduce their balance. We've sent out a lot of letters to folks to try and get them to make payment arrangements. We've started with the highest balances and we're working our way down. So we started with those folks who owe over $10,000 and working through the next group that we started working on was the 7,500 to 10,000 range. Basically, offering them a payment arrangement, and if they don't respond within a certain number of days, by a certain date, we have told them that we will pursue civil action. So at this time, we have about five that we are pursuing civil action, using the solicitor's office to pursue collecting those balances. Just of note, we have a very large commercial account that owes us a significant amount of money. They are on their own payment arrangements and they've been paying us $5,000 a month towards their outstanding balance. We also sent out letters to 182 accounts, as I mentioned before, whose balances were $500 or less. So those are the folks that maybe didn't pay the, the final bill or two. There's about $40,000 outstanding on those accounts, and of that 40,000, we've collected about 12,000 on those accounts. So I'm hoping that money will continue to come in. And lastly, just showing the, the graph at the bottom of the dollars that we've reduced the balance and also the number of accounts. Is there any questions? Anything I can update anyone on?
I have none.
So I think as we continue to pursue the civil actions, we'll start seeing dollars flowing a little more rapidly. So, you know, like I said, we started with those accounts that are over $10,000, so hopefully we can get those resolved and then move into, we've sent over some of the 7,500 to 10,000 accounts to get those resolved. So we should start seeing this move as the civil actions start to be resolved.
Okay, any, any questions or comments?
I have none.
All right, thank you, Jen. On to new business. First is to consider a resolution approving the intergovernmental cooperation agreement to rejoin the county's UCC Board of Appeals. I think, Jeff, you have the info on that?
Yes, I do. The universal construction code is the building code that Pennsylvania has adopted that we utilize to ensure that all construction meets normal standards. As part of that code, there is a provision, if you as a builder or homeowner submit plans and apply for a building permit and it gets denied because it doesn't meet proper regulations, but you still believe that it does, that you have an alternate solution or, or something about that project that you can prove that it is sufficient and will meet the standards of the code, there is an appeal process, similar to an appeal that the zoning hearing board would, would go through. This is a building code appeal. Every municipality technically should have their own building code appeal group. It becomes very difficult for municipalities to find the right mix of people that are willing to serve on it. You need people from various trades, people from the public. It, it's, it becomes cumbersome and it's a lot of work and effort when you may only have one, two, or sometimes no building code appeals in a calendar year. What this resolution and intergovernmental agreement does is that it puts Exeter Township in with a group of other municipalities. So we're all sharing the resources. We might get someone from Exeter who is a general contractor, he might serve on this board. You might get someone from Birdsboro who is a plumbing contractor, he might serve on it. You can pick people from the various boards in conjunction with the county, and if an appeal comes in, the appeal goes directly to that group, not to the township. It saves a lot of time and effort. It's a good cooperative agreement between a number of townships and the county. We were part of this, it's time to renew into, into this program. I think it's a, it's very worthwhile, it will save the township a lot of time and effort moving forward. It's my recommendation that the board adopt both the resolution and the intergovernmental agreement.
Jeff, is this, is this standard in other counties?
Some counties do it, some municipalities that have a very large building department and they have a lot of people interested, they have their own. I've, I've dealt with both, where I had one in my own municipality and I also did an intergovernmental agreement with five other townships. We didn't involve the county. It was coming through the county, but you can do these, these agreements and the state is okay with this under the universal construction code. As long as you meet those criteria, they wrote it so you can cooperatively work together.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions?
And Jeff, one question for Jeff. I mean, Jeff, maybe you mentioned this, but there's no extra cost to this, it actually would save us money in the long run.
There is a, a one-time fee, it's a $300 fee, which basically covers the advertising and the initial hearings and everything, which is actually relatively inexpensive considering if we had to advertise the case ourself, have a hearing, go through the whole process, you would need, you know, an engineer there, you would need an attorney there. The cost, it's well worth the $300.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five oh vote. Next, we have discussion on park pavilion rentals. I assume that's you, Laurie?
That is me. All right, so once again, want to just talk about updates in COVID numbers and restrictions and, and present a plan that we have developed for potential reopening of some of our rental facilities. We're getting a lot of requests for pavilion rentals, as I'm sure you can imagine, as the nicer weather approaches and numbers are falling and restrictions are being slowly lifted. So we, the administration would like to propose a phased reopening approach to our park facility rentals, excluding the Dunn Community Center. We're not quite ready to talk about indoor facility rentals at this point, but outdoor facilities are generally considered to be safer. You can spread out more, the fresh air helps, people can still mask up and, and with smaller groups, you're generally with people who, who you know, and perhaps your household or family members. So it is generally considered to be the safer option for gatherings and we know people are going to want to gather and, and get together with their friends and family in the summer. So what we're proposing is to start allowing for pavilion rentals at each of our parks, excluding Community Park, of course. So Farming Ridge, Lorraine Hollow, Pineland Park, and Trout Run at the, at the pavilions. And we're looking at a reduced capacity at this point. We've calculated the dimensions of the pavilions to figure out how many people each pavilion can accommodate, and we're looking at calculating a reduced capacity based on 36 square feet per individual so that we can ensure that there's sufficient space to allow for six feet physical distance between individuals to make it as safe as possible. Along with that, we will, of course, post all the CDC guidelines at each of the pavilions. We'll, we'll make sure that there's sufficient signage, that there's always soap in the bathrooms, and the restrooms will continue to be cleaned like they are now. But we think that we can do this safely and allow a way to at least allow somewhere for our residents to rent. We are, like I said, we are getting a lot of questions. People are used to being able to use our park facilities and I, I feel comfortable that we're at a point now that we can do this safely. And it would, of course, also allow for some revenue to come into the Parks Department. So that's what we're proposing at this point, and we'd like to start those. If the board agrees, we would like to open the systems for facility rentals this week. And then, of course, as conditions continue to improve, we will look at increasing the capacity. But we're talking for the pavilions, the, the least number of people. Pineland Park, we can only, at the capacities that we've calculated, we're talking 24 people. The other ones are 42 people and 67 people. People don't have huge gatherings under the pavilions anyway, so I don't really anticipate that being a problem.
Thank you, Laurie. Any, any questions for her?
Yes, Laurie, Jack here. Is that adults or total population?
Total people.
Okay, adult people? So the, you know, the under two-year-old included in that?
I would, I mean, I would think so, although that, of course, gets harder to tell them that you have to keep six feet physical distance between yourself and your child, but generally I would say that those are the, those are the numbers I would stick to. I don't usually break it out. When I set capacities for our rental facilities, it's, it's generally just, if I say 40, capacity's 42, it's 42 people.
Okay.
And one other question, Laurie, I mean, if you, you have a facility like that and someone says they're renting for 40 and then you get a report that there's, you know, 100 people there, what's, what happens?
It would be, it would be a challenge. We could, I don't normally, our pavilions really run on the honor system. We take the rental fee online, we don't normally take a security deposit or anything along those lines. We would be having individual signed waivers and in the past, I probably wouldn't assess a monetary penalty on this because it becomes administratively challenging to do that for pavilion rentals, but we do have lists of individuals who, if we get a report from the police that rules have been violated, they do go on a list that they're not permitted to rent in the future, or at least they're not permitted, permitted to rent for some period of time. So that is something that we can make, that we, we do make renters aware of and we can continue to do that and make them aware that if they don't follow the rules and we become aware of it, they would be prevented from renting in the future.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Do we need any kind of motion or do you just, do we have a consensus? Is that all right?
I would take a motion if you're inclined. I think that there was a motion to close the facilities.
Okay.
A year ago.
Yeah, I would recommend, I'd recommend a motion.
All right, and what was the capacity, Laurie? What percentage?
We're calling it 50%.
50%. Okay, someone want to take a crack at this?
I'll give it a shot. I move that we reopen our township outdoor facilities for rental at 50% maximum occupancy. Effective? Laurie?
Ma?
Effective May 11th, 2021.
I'll second that motion. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five oh vote.
Thank you.
Next, we have the, consider accepting the deed of dedication of right of way at 6112 Perkyomen Avenue. Is this Joe or?
Yes, I could, I can address this. This is part of the district justice land development plan that was approved along Perkyomen Avenue for the site that's right next to Walmart. Part of the requirement was to offer ultimate right of way for the township to utilize in the future. And before us this evening, there's an offer of dedication, a legal description that was prepared by the applicant's engineer, as well as the deed of dedication that was prepared by the township solicitor. And we are looking for approval this evening to accept this offer of right of way, ultimate right of way, in pertaining to the district justice land development plan. It was a requirement of the plan approval. It's labeled as MDC 23-2-03 land development, and we recommend the board consider approval and acceptance of this ultimate right of way.
Any questions for Joe?
And Joe, I know we'll be going into it next, is it, it looks, it appears that the sidewalk easement is the same then?
Yes, the sidewalk easement is an additional easement that's reserved. The township has in the past and currently is looking at Perkyomen Avenue as potential improvements down the line. This would secure that area that if the township would seek or obtain any type of federal grants or for sidewalk, or if they would require and exercise their right under the second-class township code to require sidewalk, that easement would also be reserved. We did review the legal description and the deed of dedication on the sidewalk easement was prepared by the township solicitor, and we also do recommend the township to consider approval and of that easement area as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the deed of dedication?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, thanks for unmuting, Dave. Any comments or questions with that motion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh vote. Now, the, the next thing we would need is an emotion to accept a permanent sidewalk easement at the same property, 6112 Perkyomen Avenue. Someone want to make that motion?
I move that we accept the permanent sidewalk easement at 6112 Perkyomen Avenue.
I will second that.
Any comments or questions with that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five oh vote.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion on resume in-person public means for township boards and commissions. Jeff, is that you?
Yes, it's me and Laurie. We've had some discussions about this. The governor's office recently made a decision to allow public meetings and basically to more or less open up the state of Pennsylvania effective, I believe it's June 1st or May 31st. The, the issue that, that comes before us is we have been having virtual meetings and we do have not the largest board meeting room. And there's, there's still a concern with, even though the governor says to, you're allowed to open back up, there are some stipulations that are still tied to that. For instance, until a 70% vaccine rate is reached, the state is still requiring mandated mask wearing in these, these particular locations. CDC still recommends six-foot distancing. And the, the main issue that we're facing is that even though the governor said you can do this, that does not preempt the municipalities from continuing to do what they're doing now, we're setting now, or setting their own regulations based on, on common sense practices and their own individual circumstances, size of the room, number of people that come to meetings. Currently, Berks County is in what's still considered a high level of community transition. So, you know, we're still really high up there. The latest numbers that we were able to receive were from April thirtieth to May sixth. And during that time span, Berks County was a twenty-seven-point-eight percent fully vaccinated, which is very low. If we're planning on within the next month or so to be up to seventy percent, a lot has to occur during the next month. And you don't want to, I personally don't think we should be looking to jump the gun too quickly and open back up fully without getting a little closer to that date and looking at the demographics and the statistics. We do have a board meeting two weeks from now, which would give us plenty of time to continue researching this and coming up with a potential hybrid-type plan of how many people might be in the room, depending on, on, on the circumstances. At that point, the Board can make a decision two weeks from now on, do they want to go back to a full-blown meeting? Or because of the way the calendar falls, there would be a three-week time period between that meeting and the first meeting in June, which would give another three weeks of time for the numbers to improve in the number of people being vaccinated. We might not be in that high threshold level anymore. We might be more in the moderate level on the state scale that they're using. So it's my recommendation that in the interim, we keep this on the agenda as an item to discuss at the next meeting on the twenty-fourth and see how things have improved. At that point, we can have the Board make a decision. Do you want to hold off until the week before the next meeting? We could, we can put the wording together that the Board could authorize the staff to keep the meeting as a virtual meeting if the numbers don't attain a certain criteria by a week before the first-June meeting, something of that nature. We can work on that, and I'll work with Liz to make sure we, we have the proper language on that. It's kind of like an if-then sort of situation. But we did want to make the Board aware of this. It kind of came out suddenly. No one, I don't think, was really expecting the Governor to, to make this announcement the way he did. I think it was a kind of a knee-jerk reaction to what the Governor of New Jersey did, and I think it was the next day Pennsylvania also came out with this kind of decision. So we don't want to rush into it. We do know that the residents do want to have in-public meetings, but, you know, for their health and safety and the Board and the staff, I don't believe we should jump into it. So at this point, the staff recommends that we continue discussing this matter. We'll have it on the agenda at the next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have some good news in terms of the vaccination levels, and we can make a decision at that point.
In two weeks, can you also provide us with, you know, room capacity and then the percentages and so forth? So we have that, that information as well?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Jeff, will you, will you do that for the boardroom as well as the ballroom at the Reading?
We can. I was not here in the township when there were meetings held over in the ballroom. I understand there were quite a few logistical issues in terms of acoustics and AV and things of that nature. We would have to work through those things. The caution is, if we make all those arrangements to go over there, it may just be a temporary fix, and if things clear up and eighty percent are vaccinated and we can move back over to here, how much do we need to do over there for a temporary issue? And then, then it would also be the question of tying up the ballroom permanently for board meetings, which I don't think that was a direction that we'd like to see.
No, the only reason I bring that up is because, but it does give us the additional space, which if you're looking at distancing, then it, and again, too, I know that the acoustics were not fantastic, but, but again, it does at least give us the size.
Mm-hmm.
As we, I think that at this point in time that we should, as soon as we can, to go back to public, and just to take a look at the different options that we do have.
We can, we can get the statistics on both locations and have that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And Jeff, if you could include in that, you know, if you're looking at the country club, a larger space, larger cleaning, you know, the expenses as well, you know, for moving there and then moving out.
Okay.
Well, I agree with Joe. We need to get back to regular meetings as soon as possible. There have been, many townships have never stopped having them. And about that, I agree that it's bad sound over at the country club, but it's been over a year that we could have done something about it, and nothing's been done. And if put a good sound system in there, it'll be better for people who want to use that once it gets up and running.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to department reports. Public Works.
We are continuing with highway mowing. We got the, continue with road repairs for the coming up painting projects. We doing some finishing touches on the story walk trail over there behind the library. We also doing some cleanup up behind radio shack. Other than that, that's pretty much it for us. Well, we also had brush pickup. That, I think we're done with that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we're done with the brush pickup. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Clarence. Engineering.
Actually, everything I have was covered under the agenda this evening, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Joe.
Police. Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Mr. Pyo to the Board. Look forward to working with you. We just received, the Department received a small grant for education and enforcement for pedestrian safety efforts in specific areas of the township. PennDOT awarded the grant to us, so we'll be focusing on intersections that have higher incidence of crashes involving pedestrians. We're also going to focus some of our efforts in, in and around the schools, making sure the kids are getting safely to school and the school that's out, that they're, that they're safe there, there's intersections and crosswalks as well. We're progressing along on our interviews for our, our new officers. We're doing backgrounds right now of our top ten candidates. Again, I'm really pleased at the quality of candidates that we have this time around. We have a lot of really good individuals, and I'm sure we'll find some great officers to serve the township. In addition, as Laurie mentioned earlier, we are working with the parade organizers for the Memorial Day Parade, ensuring that there's going to be a safe event there. We will have officers participating in the parade. We have about seven officers now who have formally served in the services, so they'll be participating in the parade as well, so we're happy to see that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Solicitors' report.
Nothing to add. I would just like to welcome Mr. Pyo also to the Board, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, Township Manager, report.
Just a couple items. This morning, I was, I attended a meeting out of Crystal Lake. It was hosted by the Mount Pembroke Municipal Authority. They serve parts of the township, Exeter Township, with public water. They are in the process of applying for several additional grants to do work at the lake there. The lake is owned by them, and the park is owned by them, but it actually resides in Exeter Township. The, the goal of this is, it will be, they will be dredging a portion of the lake, and they will use the dredge materials, the sediment, to create a wetland area next to the lake as well as a meadow area with native plants for bees and what have you. The goal is to help stabilize the area and increase the flow of the water from the aquifer. It's a spring-fed lake or pond, but over the years, the sediment has settled in, and it's not refreshing. They get a lot of algae blooms in the area. So they, they basically had this informational meeting with the municipalities that are affected in the area that are serviced by the water company, and what they're asking for is our support to just write letters of support for their grant applications. They're applying to DEP for a grant. They already have secured one grant from DEP, and they're also looking at another grant from DCNR. So it was a very informative program with a couple environmental scientists there. They are, they're pretty much shovel-ready to move ahead with this project. Most of the engineering has been taken care of, and they just wanted us to help support them. So I will be putting together a letter to support, just letting the legislators know when they are helping assign the money to various projects, that this one is important. It's a good inter-municipal agreement-type program. Two other items. One is, you know, over the past six months or so, we have been dealing with the bond refinancing that the township has been undergoing, the restructuring of our bonds. We're happy to report that today, everything, the final bond closed out today. All the sales were done, everything was settled. So we've actually gone through four different bond series that have been purchased, and we've refinanced everything. And the, the final news to report is, because of this refinancing, the Board, by taking the action that you did to move ahead with this, the township will receive savings of one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars. In doing so, we also leveled out our payments. There used to be this real high bump several years down the road that we would have had to pay extraordinary amounts. We've leveled the payments out, so they're basically leveling out and then trailing off when the final payments are made in two thousand and thirty-nine. So I want to thank Jen for her work on this project with our financial consultants. I think it was a very good team, they're very easy to work with, and it's a nice savings for the township. The very last item is just a general reminder, we do have an election next week, and there is a huge proliferation of campaign signs everywhere in the township, on private property, on public right-of-ways, on township property. We just ask everyone to be cooperative. It's not legal to go and tamper with anyone else's campaign signs. We just want everyone to know that the township does not move and replace signs if at all possible. When they're on township property, we try and kind of cut the grass around them, knowing that the campaign is almost over, so it's not our policy to do that. Other locations in the township, we have not been doing roadside mowing, and if we were in, on any township property out there, it's unlikely that the township would have encountered any of these campaign signs this early in the mowing season. Just remember that you are required to get permission from private property owners to put your signs out there, and just remind everyone that once the primary election is over, to remove, remove your signs promptly so the grass can be mowed and we don't have leftover signs litter in the township. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. On to public comment, non-agenda items.
We had two submitted. The first one is from Caitlin Celia. I think, hopefully, I pronounced that properly. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Caitlin Bieber is the last name.
This week, for the first time, we had JP Mascalo's recycling service. I am truly disappointed with the lack of respect for our property. We are asked to place our bins, contains, et cetera, on the side of our sidewalks or grass or driveways for put-up. Well, then I expect to find my bins back where I placed them at. I witnessed the laziness of the employees throwing or sliding the bins around the roadways. Some bins rolled back into the middle of the roadway where cars have to go around them. I yelled at them to place it back, but again, no respect, and drove off. It is too hard to take one more step and place it back onto the side of our property. If our bins or contains get destroyed, we are responsible for getting a new one. Well, I will not be purchasing one. In addition, we pay more money to this company than I accept the service to be just as good, if not better, than my old provider, who is AJB. This needs to be addressed with the company who owns the township.
And the next one is from David Hughes.
This is David Hughes again, Forty-seventh Street, and these comments are related to non-agenda items. And I just want to speak to the Board and to the public about the Board's approach, being reactive or being proactive. And I think it should be clear to anyone that follows township business, that when I or other concerned citizens bring up important issues, only then does our supervisors react, often without mentioning our concerns. All of a sudden, it just appears on the agenda. So they react to what we do, and they're not proactive. We're not, for example, so it is with the age receivables. All of a sudden, I question it, and it's on the agenda. But they're not showing us honestly the information as it really is. And what about the wasteful spending? They're not talking about that, yet we can see it. And we also have questions about the unqualified employees that are working in our township. They make fantastic salaries, often competitive with the public corporations that they would have a similar position in. Number four, the lack of transparency. It's, they promised transparency, but they've got something much worse than that. And then they refuse to show their significant spending plans that they have. It's been over two years. How much money is the Promenade project going to cost us? What other things do they have? Is the public aware of the ten-million-dollar plan they have for Trout Run? Why are our parks rundown? They haven't been maintaining them. There's so much that needs to be discussed honestly with the public, but it's hidden. So let's be more proactive than reactive. Thank you.
Okay, on to Supervisor Report. Ms. Kocher?
I am, I was going to talk about the recycling, but it has been brought up already, so I think we need to keep an eye on that because we just want to have good service. Everybody does. So that's all I have for tonight.
Is he on mute? Are you there?
Which one? Me, me, Greg?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, you're new, you get a pen.
Okay, thank you. No, just thank you very much, everybody. It's been interesting. Uh, been interesting so far and look forward to working with everyone.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Staub.
Yeah, obviously. Welcome, Jack. Uh, happy to have you on board. And just let everyone know that uh there was an email that was received from Janet Grayden uh representing Troop 319 with a thank you for allowing them to use our our space for their sale. So uh letting her know that, letting us know and the community know. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spees.
Yeah, thanks, Joe, for for covering that. I was going to mention that from Troop 319 as well. Both Mother's Day and Easter, they sold out early and they were very successful. So they wanted to thank everyone in the township for that support. And just wanted to, again, uh, welcome Jack to the board. That's all I have.
Okay, um, uh, the the one thing I'd like to say with recycling, when we get complaints like like we got tonight, is is there, is it possible to make sure that they get to JP Mascaro? It can't, it can't be resolved unless they're aware of the problems. So who who do we have someone who could contact them?
Yes, we do. Jeff and I discussed this earlier this afternoon, um, because we did hear um some complaints from from a couple of residents. Uh, but yes, we we will keep track and we will make sure that Miss Carol is notified of the complaints.
Okay, thank you. Then the the only other thing I I have is I uh they say a picture says a thousand words. And in order to keep this short, my my backdrop tonight is a picture of all the um keep food collected from the uh Fourth Saturday of April Food Drive. So just want to make sure uh the entire community knows how much we appreciate their efforts. We had over 30 people volunteer in the drive in terms of collecting, going door to door, uh packaging and we'll start giving it out on May 21st, which is the next um uh food gift with the food pantry. Also, the food pantry is moving to Laux Chalmentree this month. They'll no longer be using the Promenade. So uh if anyone's aware of someone who is in need, that's where they would go. That's all I have. At this point, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Jack, how about you second it? We'll get you get you on board here.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. Any uh comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh vote. Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.